It being six o'clock and having a quorum, we will call the meeting to order and start with roll call, please.
Hesse.
Present.
Griggs.
Here.
Laird.
Here.
Uh, Montmorel is excused. Uh, Robeson.
Here.
Sparhawk.
Here.
Mayor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I thank you, Patrick. Uh, first item is the consent agenda, which consists of accounts payable from July twenty second and tree board new member applications and appointments for Vanessa Harmony and Les Kuhn. Anything to pull for discussion?
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, motion by Erica, second by Jess. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is public comment. If anyone's here who'd like to make a comment about something um, that doesn't have a public hearing segment on the agenda. None of our items do, so really if you're here to talk to us about anything, now is your shot unless you're on the agenda. Anybody here in person? Anybody online?
Um, no.
All right, seeing none, we will move on then to trustee comments. Anybody have comments since our last meeting? Updates, go ahead. Okay, Colin.
I'm not ready.
Not ready. All right, Jess, help Colin get ready.
Okay, um, I attended G C E, the G C E board meeting last Friday. Um, and one of the things they talked about was this impact accelerator grant opportunity that the state is coming out with. Um, it sounds like they're looking for applicants with policy ideas and projects. Um, you can't do only a project, but the policy doesn't have to be moved, like it doesn't have to actually happen. It just has to be an idea. Um, and it's a pretty significant amount of money. Um, and they're getting together this week. I haven't heard from Morgan yet, but all you have to do is put in a letter of intent before August first and then the second round opens after that. Um, and I had an idea about our water meter um, upgrades because it would be um, relevant and the budget would work. Uh, so I brought that up. I'm gonna talk to Morgan about it. I was gonna send the information to Public Works and see if they're interested in getting on the wagon for that.
Cool.
There was a couple of other ideas that I don't remember, but you have to move really fast, so.
I have one.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my topic.
Okay.
So, um, affordable housing is part of the focus of this as well. So, um, they want some policy changes around affordable housing, ADUs in particular.
Okay.
So one idea is we propose that we would sponsor changes to the P U Ds that we've talked about in the region and we get money to get help to do it. And then we potentially get them, those P U Ds to say we would allow E U Ds, ADUs, too many acronyms. And then we'd be able to actually implement some of the things we've talked about already. So that would be another potential.
The other thing about this grant is that the policy does not have to be the same as the project. You can put in for a different policy from the project and get money for two things.
They don't have to be energy related?
It, it was, I'm trying to pull it up. It's a bunch of things.
But they have, but housing is considered an energy climate thing.
Buildings, land use, transportation, and waste. Those are four key sectors. Um, the first round is open June sixteenth, due August first, but all you have to do is do a letter of intent. And then the second round is October first through November seventeenth. And they're saying that there's no waiting, like that you're not waited whether you go in first or second. But Morgan was like, if we can get in August first, we should get in August first. So I just wanted to bring that to you guys. And then they are working on the budget for next year and their ask is going from, this year we did forty-two thousand and they're asking for forty-four thousand two hundred from us is their recommendation, so.
For G C.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, and then just a plug for the chamber business confluence is happening September seventeenth. So just keep that on your radar.
Great, thanks Jess. Colin, did you want to add anything else? I think we'll, let's hear from everybody and then let's circle back and maybe chat with staff a little bit about how we might move forward.
Yeah, I just wanna give people that they, an update that the mobile har- home park purchase negotiation is still ongoing. Uh, we have uh, managed to raise some pro- additional private funding, so we're up to fourteen million. So we're still trying to um, see what the venue, the avenue might be for some potential state funding uh, to get us to the twenty. So uh, still ongoing, uh, and it's still in the works.
What's the deadline?
Uh, I think it's August seventh. Okay.
Okay, anything else, Colin?
Nope.
Other comments? Ross, do you have anything?
Uh, I attended a tree board meeting. Um, we got a couple of new members that we, I believe, just passed through um, consent. But uh, just really excited. Actually, we had a great meeting, I think, to kind of get into a little bit of sort of protocol and where we fit in. And some of our newer, newer members have some really good ideas and a lot of like very professional background. Um, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. It was, it was an interesting meeting. Um, and prior, and I think the meeting before, we'd actually done a walk and looked at all of our sort of main street trees in various states of um, good growth and not so good growth. Um, and um, I think, you know, a lot of that will just inform better decisions going forward. Um, and I've also had a meeting with the Public Arts Commission. Um, um, we discussed sort of the unfortunate incident with uh, one of the, the new sculptures here in town. And then also our, um, I think purchasing a small battery powered speaker that, that should be nicely and available for everyone pretty much, um, but, but specifically for the use during our art walk so that we can be outside and make sure everybody can hear when we do that, cause that, that event has just gotten much more, much more popular by the year.
Great, thanks Ross. Chris, any comments?
Um, sure. Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess I'll just read this, cause probably easier for me. Um, like, yeah, this is a letter that I will be in the sun and will be, has been distributed to some other newspapers too, so. Uh, yeah, in the span of a single week, K D and K has gone from experience one of our greatest highs, celebrating the hundredth birthday of our Art Ackerman, the world's oldest DJ, to the devastating low of losing all the station's federal funding. This amounts to hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars or twenty-seven percent of the station's annual budget. And is a funding challenge unlike any other in the station's forty-two year history. Uh, K D and K has long been a model of the best of what community radio can be with ninety-eight regular DJs and program hosts free of station restrictions on their content and self-expression, award-winning local reporting, twenty-two volunteer public affairs shows, a powerhouse youth radio partnership with the Andy Zanka Youth Empowerment Program, a remarkable culture of music discovery, a strong commitment to emergency preparedness and regional resilience, and an authentic local spirit that springs from a cross-section of our community. We know that K D and K holds a special place in the hearts of so many. That is why now, in our hour of need, uh, we turn to you. Uh, if you believe in a free and truthful press, a place for art and expression outside the confines of commercialism, a right to information and emergency alerts for residents of remote areas, and a democratic institution truly by and for the people, now is your moment. Uh, you can visit kdnk.org or call us over at the station and make a donation um, to help us fill this enormous hole that's kind of unlike anything we've seen before, so. Um, and thanks to many of you who are members already and thank you for your existing support. Um, but I would encourage anybody who's not a member to become one and uh, those who are, if you can, to uh, see if you can give us a little bit more money at this time. Um, it's gonna be uh, was, you know, sort of a part-time job has become a very much full-time job for me this week and uh, it's gonna be a lot of meetings and a lot of uh, reaching out to people to try to figure out how we build that um, for you know, it's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, but it's probably a two-year, two-year minimum until Congress is in a state to potentially restore some of that funding. So, um, we're gonna be figuring it out. Um, so yeah, that's uh, the very bad news. Um, but uh, we had also had a very good meeting with the environmental board um, yesterday night and they're getting ready. Uh, I think it turns out that they, is it the nineteenth that we're scheduled? I think it's the nineteenth they're scheduled to present in front of this board for ahead of budget stuff. They'll have one more meeting ahead of that. Um, and I feel like they're really gelling and um, Fred's doing a really great job chairing the meetings. Um, Beth Shoemaker's been bringing a lot of great new energy to the board um, as well, as well as all, it's fairly new board now, pretty much, but uh, they're they're getting their feet wet. And um, so hopefully they'll have some good updates on what, you know, but they, along with us, have accomplished in the last year as well as what, you know, might be looking forward to next year and um, I might have to go back and look at it. But if you, they are, they're, I think they're gonna have like a breakout group that's having a little noticed bonfire meeting to talk about your sort of um, bag fee thing, if you wanted to join them, Erica.
Okay.
And um, Mountain Fair, it's coming up. Stage starts getting built tomorrow.
All right, thanks, Chris. Jess, did you have anything else?
Wanted to add on this no funding, this takeaway funding situation at the G C E meeting. Tom Jankowski announced that Garfield County is going from a three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar contribution to G C E to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, that's not firm yet, but that's what they're saying. So it's a pretty big hit to G C E's budget as well.
Thanks. Erica.
Um, I attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting last week or the week before, I'm forgetting right now. Um, and I just wanted to clarify with the group, cause they were discussing, it sounds like a subcommittee has is talking about the wayfinding discussion that we had, and I think Kevin, you were there or part of some of the discussions. It was a little unclear to me who had met. Um, and it, I just wanted to chime in and just make sure I didn't, when we had suggested them all talking, I don't think we were looking for like some big massive wayfinding sign project. Um, I just wanted to make sure all the different, you kind of disparate groups that had talked about creating signs or wayfinding, which was, you know, the creative district had brought it up a few, you know, a couple times, bike pad trails and um, Parks and Rec for their parks. I just wanted to make sure that people are kind of on the same page. If it makes sense to combine efforts into one, then let's do it, but um, there were a few on the Parks and Rec Board who were feeling a little bit overwhelmed, like um, I had kind of thrown a big or we had kind of thrown a big project at them to create this whole sign thing. So I just wanted to um, just share that I had chimed in and said it's more about making sure that we're not being duplicative in any sort of sign-making efforts that might be out there. Um, and that was really the goal, but they could come back if there's a proposal from folks talking that's like, oh yeah, we do need somebody to take the lead on this. I'd be open to that, but I didn't want it to create a big monster, so.
I, I think that's how I envisioned.
Okay, good.
It as well, you know, get together, talk, talk to the different groups and then at some point, we may need to like officially give marching orders of moving forward, but it was more just a talk to folks and see what's going on.
Yep, great, awesome. Yep, that was it. And other than that, it was a pretty late uh, Parks and Rec meeting um, with Eric uh, being uh, out of town. So it was just kind of the pool update that we had just received the night before, I believe, and a few other things, but that was really it.
On the way, wayfinding thing, I, I don't think there's a huge, you know, time pressure on that. I would prefer that we let it simmer and, and not have parallel things at least and hope that the Parks and Rec doesn't go charging into doing a Parks thing and the, and the bike pad going in a whole different direction. Um, make sure they're just, I think that's the main thing is to try to keep that.
Exactly, and for.
Also, um, Rick are communicating on this.
Yeah, that's perfect. And for Parks and Rec, it would really be part of their uh, master plan, kind of R F P. That's where the discussion's coming from. Not launching in anything new, but just like, is this included in our, you know, scope of work for our master plan, next master plan um, or not, or what is the scope of that, so.
And the environmental board was also interested in potentially at least being, having one level, certain level of consultation on that master plan or, you know,
Oh.
being apprised of what, what is going on, on that front, um, so that they can have their input too.
Yep, cool.
On the wayfinding note, it was talked about at the chamber meeting that the chamber is contributing money to Mountain Fair and Carbondale Arts in order to have wayfinding from the park to member businesses and other things going on on Main Street. So there is some wayfinding and there was talk of like, at some point, maybe with Creative District and Carbondale Arts, this will become a bigger thing in town. And so I think the chamber is interested in helping with that because of economic development as well, so.
Okay, um, thanks for all the comments. I don't have anything to add, so I think I'd love to hear from staff. Is staff aware of this accelerator grant program? Has that been discussed? And I mean, if we say from tonight, let's go forward with a letter of intent, that's like this week. It has, people are gearing up for Mountain Fair and everything else, so I just wanna be careful what we're but it sounds like there's some really different ideas that could be as far as, as water or housing or probably energy and it's at waste, so. Um, I just wonder how we proceed with that. Has this been discussed at staff level?
No.
Okay, and is your mic on?
Yeah.
Right. Patrick. Uh, no, it has not.
Okay.
That being said, if, if it's a letter of intent, I don't think that would be too hard to get out by that deadline. Um, what we would need is some guidance on what are we really asking for?
G C E said that they would, like, they could write the letter and bring it to staff.
Okay, even if it's not energy related, like if it's A D Us?
Because it's, I think that that's part of it, yeah. I just pulled it up and it, he's right, it is.
Housing, okay.
So.
That's kind of a, probably a transportation goal more than anything in terms of density.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Very, very like large umbrella. Um, and we could also just wait and go to the second round if we didn't want to. They're saying that it's not going to be waited.
And the second round is how far out?
October first to November seventeenth. We would at least have a
I mean, that sounds.
Town manager.
I'm inclined to do the wait. I understand the impetus for like, get it while, while the getting's good here, but I feel like we'll be really rushing something and we haven't done any sort of evaluation of like, well, that's our top priority. Is it the water thing? Is it the A D U thing? If we talked about this for another hour, how many other things would we come up with? So I'm inclined to say, we're really interested, let's spend some time over the next couple of months getting something together, but I'm open to what other people have to say. I, it's just hard for me to imagine a letter of intent that will have the level of detail that they'll be looking for and that we'll wanna stick to, that we could come up with in the next like five workdays or so with everything else going on.
I, I would just think that um, they're, they're, they're seeking ideas and they don't have a strong sense of what they will fund. So I think the sooner we're in, the more we shape what we get. And if we wait too long, like a lot of town, uh, state funding projects, um, we'll miss an opportunity. It's just, uh, almost every state funding grant program they have has no money because everybody jumps in early and then it goes, so. I don't know that it really hurts us. We can, if they say no, we come back later with something else, but um, if we have two good ideas, I'd suggest going for it and I'm happy to help craft the letter and check with staff and see if that makes any sense, but I, I'd like to jump on it.
So your thought with the A D U thing is really digging much more deeply into this idea of trying to coordinate an election for P U Ds in the town?
Yep.
I mean, that would be.
And we, we have no capacity to do that, so we would get the capacity to do it and manage the whole process. And then free up the potential for more people to do A D Us, which right now, my sense is people would like to do it, but the P U Ds
Yeah.
won't let them.
I think the P U D, A D U thing would fall under the buildings sector.
Yeah.
Policies that promote building energy codes that exceed the forthcoming Model O Energy and Carbon Code, energy performance standards and energy efficiency incentives, but then there was like all kinds of other things too, so.
Land use, it's policies that promote compact housing might be where it fits too.
Yeah. What was the other idea that you had talked about?
The water meter upgrades that we've been talking about because.
And that's just conservation, basically.
And reducing the three-day driving around every month and, like I just thought. And I think we said it was like one and a half million dollars or something to implement, so. It was just like a, maybe that's how we fund it quicker.
I don't know, other thoughts? I mean, I guess my, my main reluctance right now is I'm looking at Jared over there and I'm looking at Kevin over here and I'm just wondering, like, because it's all well and good for us to submit a letter of intent, there is a certain amount of work that will fall to staff to manage this and, and move it forward, even if it involves external contractors and all that. So I just wanna make sure that if we're saying, let's do this, that staff's on board and feels like the, has the bandwidth.
I, I guess the thing I would throw in is what I heard Jess saying was there's two rounds of applications before they decide on the funding and according to the stuff, it doesn't matter which one you get in on.
That's what they say. It says CEO will review all L O Is and inform applicants whether or not they are encouraged to submit a full application. Applicants who receive an encouraged decision from CEO can submit a full application between October first, twenty twenty-five and November fifth, twenty twenty-five for round one. And between January sixteenth and February eighteenth of twenty twenty-six for round two.
Um, but it does say awards would be announced in December for the first round and April for the second round.
So they will give away money before they.
Does it, and I apologize for not knowing, but does it talk about what funding's available during the first and second round? Or is it more like Colin said, whatever's left after the first round is then available?
It says the accelerator will provide fifty million dollars to support local government policy adoption in four key sectors.
It'll do two hundred thousand for policies and then one point eight million for implementation. How convenient, that's the price of the water meters.
That's why I was like, oh, bingo, like.
It, you know, my initial take on this is it would be so nice to know if it was twenty-five million in the first round and twenty-five in the second, because if that was the case, then I'd be more inclined to have a little bit more of a discussion about it, just for the fact that Ryan started, he'll be here for your next meeting and, you know, he probably would have some thoughts and ideas on that. But if it's forty-nine million in the first round and the million that's left in the second.
Well, here's a, here's a thought. Uh, we're already doing the water meter work. We've already allocated money. It's happening. Might be easier to write that L Y.
Well, the only thing with that is that you have to have a policy application. You have to apply for the policy work to get money for a project and they don't have to be related, but you can't apply for the project without the policy work. So.
Those are interesting rules.
They want.
One idea.
Because.
And they want to, they have this money and they wanna get it out into the community.
You've got a good idea and a good project.
I'd love to hear from you.
On this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm kind of free-forming it because this is the first I've really.
Y'all are, this is a free form.
About this uh, grant opportunity, you know, for, for what it's worth, the planning department currently is managing two grants right now. So, you know, I think from a managing uh, A D U grant capacity, we're probably pretty limited and, and, and kind of knowing consultant's work, it still involves a heavy lift from town staff. Um, you know, it does seem like we have a, an executable project and from what Jess is saying, if we have to have a policy, I, I think that A D U policy could be something that we would pursue and maybe it's a pursue and in phase two or something like that, if, if there's multiple um, grant opportunities that exist, but if we have to have a policy, that could be a low-hanging fruit to capture a, a policy, because we have discussed a lot about A D Us and P U Ds and those limitations.
Is it supposed to be an innovative policy or is it just any policy?
It says policies that promote compact housing, parking management, E V charging, renewable energy, and discourage green field development is the land use sector.
That's in, okay, that part, okay.
And I feel like we have a lot of all this. I just feel like we need more than like.
I know, I, I was like.
Couple of working days to get it together.
Fifteenth, June sixteenth.
Okay, so we're just here.
By one or the other, probably, right? You can't do a, throw it, throw in something half-baked and then get rejected and then come back in October and we don't know.
And I'm still inclined to say, even if it's a missed opportunity, to say, let's wait and do it right. And really look at all the things that might fit into that. Um, and ideally, I think we'd have a policy and a project that dovetail together nicely. And we've done a lot of that, right? I mean, our building code updates and energy efficiency stuff, like we've got a lot of good examples that I think we could build on. Um, it just seems really rushed to me to do this and then sort of foist it on staff. It's like, now you gotta actually get this done.
Well, especially since you have to do, you must apply for the policy funding and not the project funding alone. Like if we could just do the project funding, it sounds like that's like.
That's easy.
In your, on your computer already, but um, yes, this policy component of figuring out what we would wanna help with, whether. In your, on your computer already, but um, yes, this policy component of figuring out what we would want to help with, whether it is. More on the parking or the A D U's or anything else. There's a whole transportation section that it could include. And then there is the waste and the building code stuff. So we could think about it more.
And I mean, your bag thing, composting stuff is also yet a third.
Right.
Option of, um, you know, there was quite a bit of push on the environmental board around commercial or restaurant. Composting and figuring out how to support those restaurants in town that are not doing that currently. So that's another potential option. But yeah, I guess, and I would assume that. They don't have to be related, but if I was assessing a bunch of different grants, I would probably be more inclined to go with something that actually dovetails together instead of just random stuff.
Yeah, it seems like they're looking for like a policy and a project that lead to accelerating a goal in that big list. And that they don't have to be connected, but yeah, I would think that that would be beneficial.
I think I think we should trust that they are saying it's not weighted. And put something together that really is what we want to do.
And so what's that next deadline? Sorry, I said so many dates. I got a little.
Opens October first to November seventeenth.
Okay, so mid-November. That gives us some time. Are we okay with that? A like, now we know, wish we would have known four weeks ago, but probably we've all had emails in our spam about this and missed it.
Seen it.
Yeah, I'm glad the G C E's on it and appreciate the encouragement to like, just throw something in there, but I'd rather do it in a more. Intentional way and make sure staff has capacity, it's aligned with our goals for the year, all that kind of stuff.
I'm trying a chance.
And give Ryan a chance to.
I would just say that I, without knowing what their what their plan is, I do feel like we're leaving something on the table potentially. And and there and there's probably i- if they're doing fif- twenty five and twenty five, or I mean, it does seem strange that they wouldn't parcel their money out per per round. That that we might. We might be missing an opportunity because everybody else, it may be in the same situation with midsummer meetings and. And 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 it sounds like we actually have a pretty good, I mean, they don't, they don't want us, they they want a proposal. To investigate this thing. And I think we've talked enough about that framework that that we could write, that we could write that proposal relatively. Easily with with the specifics are what we what we get money to find out, right, and put together. And then as far as the the water meter project, we, you know, we have a number and. It's basically ready to, ready to go. I understand, I understand the 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 notion to wait. But if it were to, I mean, I would, I would, I think, try to get what we could sooner rather than later on that one. Just just my my take, but I understand.
Thoughts? Think we wait unless.
Yeah.
Enough people want to push forward with something.
Yeah. I think we can come up with something better that would get. More likely to get funded if we wait and have a little bit more time to think it through.
And the Colorado Energy Office and my interactions with them is they're very supportive, like they'll kind of hold your hand through a process. You call them, they'll. They'll start working with you and say, do you think it'd be more likely if we did this or if we did that and kind of help you through that process? And I think we'd have time to do all that if we don't have to do it in the next five days.
Well, is there maybe that would suggest maybe there's a, maybe it's worth reaching out to them and. Seeing if we can probe a little bit more about what they're thinking on this, I guess. I don't.
I just think we wouldn't because we don't have another meeting before the deadline. So.
And we have to vote as a board to. Forward a policy or a letter of intent, or is that that's not something that could come from a staff level or or even just from the mayor?
It could. I mean, we could direct staff to to do this. I think, again, my hesitation is to say, you set aside the other work that you're doing right now and prioritize this. You know, we're not really clear on exactly what we want. It's just it's an opportunity. It just feels very rushed to me and I'd rather it be aligned with other work that we're doing and that staff's doing and that's in our annual goals and all that kind of stuff.
The other thing that I would throw in here, and I apologize for not knowing about this, but you said it's coming from core.
From the Colorado.
G C.
Yeah.
So Colorado Energy Office, I believe, is the one that we got the electrification grant for the pool and for town hall through. We're. We're just finishing up the paperwork on that grant. And. I think that waiting might be better considering the circumstances around the wait. I I'm not, I'm intentionally being vague on that, but.
Okay.
There's there's been some miscommunications and we're trying to kind of put that relationship back together.
Okay.
Is there a date we need to start on the town hall part of that grant?
The date for town hall is being driven more by our insurance and the roofing. We we have time with the grant to do it. We're not up against a deadline, but we're. I'm, we've been going back and forth and I'm still waiting to actually sign the thing, so we have it.
Okay.
I sort of think regardless of the grant, I still would like to see us try to advance something on the A D U front next year. I, yeah, I just feel like that's a huge roadblock to so much stuff.
Well, then we need to schedule a retreat um where we kind of talk about what our goals are for the next year, pre-budget, so in the next. Couple of months here. Um, and I think that'd be a great opportunity to say, if that's top priority, let's align this grant to it. Let's figure out a project that goes along with that. Um, and let's put together a good application. Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Sounds like there's some that I I totally understand would like to put something in right now, but I I'm not hearing enough staff support and and board support to move quickly. I think we need to move a little bit more slowly on that one. And we may come back and say, we missed an opportunity and they they gave all the money away. Um, that's a risk that we're taking. Okay, um, any other trustee comments? Attorney's comments? Doubt it. We have Evan here uh representing our uh attorney with Mark and Susan. Busy tonight.
Mark's there.
Oh, Mark's here. Yeah, great.
I'm on, coming at you from Canada. All's good. Am I muted?
He's on.
No, no. Um, yeah, coming at you from Canada. All's good. Um, Evan Clark, my partner is uh online. He's the one who's been handling the town center paperwork, so he'll be talking to you in a little bit.
Great, great. Thank you. Uh, managers' comments, Kevin.
I have three. Garfield County moved to stage two fire restrictions last week. We followed suit and. We're supposed to tell you that at the next meeting, so. Consider yourself informed. I don't know that this is necessarily bad news, but it is news. We've been visiting with Dola about the grant that we received for the pre-application or pre-development work over on uh. Town Center. Uh, we have not requested a reimbursement from them since two thousand three.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Sorry, twenty-three. You're, see, that's why you're here. The grant is set to expire at the end of July. They are not inclined to extend it for both bureaucratic and lack of use reasons. So that doesn't mean we have to pay anything back. It just means they're not gonna pay anything else until we're at a point where we could maybe reapply for something. So. Like I said, I I don't see it as necessarily devastating news because it doesn't seem like that project's moving all that quickly right now. And if we get to a point where it is, we can reapply, but I I think. They're feeling the pressure of budgetary things as well. And if they can, you know, somebody else can use that ninety two thousand dollars now, I think they'd like to. Let them. So no reimbursement. Of what they've already paid, which is a hundred and eight thousand dollars. We get to keep that, but we can't get any more reimbursement. Now. See, I learned this from Kirk. Kirk does this at our staff meetings. Now the good news. We had, and I'm not going to go into great detail for a reason, but we'll revisit this in a month or so. We had two outstanding young men today. Bring in something that they had found and it demonstrated a high degree of honesty and integrity. And like I said, we'll we'll get more into it at a future board meeting, but it was very good. We. Kirk reached out to their parents and told them what good they had done and so. It's it's positive. We'll recognize them publicly later.
Great. Hey, thanks, Kevin. Um, moving on then, unless there's any questions on any of those items, we'll get into our action items. We just have three this evening and they're hopefully all pretty straightforward. First one I'll recuse myself from, um, because I'm involved in this work for the school district, but it's our school resource officer agreement. So I'll step out and I'll step back in in a moment.
He needed a buffer at the end of a.
Okay.
You're fine.
Uh, so tonight I'm I'm before you to uh share with you good news. Um, and that is a uh a current agreement with the R E one school district for our school resource officer program. Uh, over the past several years, uh, the R E one school district, as well as the town, have been in in concert and and speaking about uh the importance. And their desire to continue that program. Uh, and. Their goal is to uh eventually cover seventy-five percent of the S R O. Salary. Uh, we're not quite there yet, but we are getting there. And so before you. You have uh an agreement with R E one. Which we've been doing for several years now. It lays out the specifics of the S R O program, the do's, the don'ts. All of the fun stuff, uh, as well as the financials. And so this year, um, their contribution is up twelve thousand dollars from years past. Uh, and they're now covering roughly sixty one thousand dollars. Out of a rough one hundred thousand dollar salary uh for the S R O program. I'm more than happy to answer questions or talk about the S R O program. I'll I'll kind of defer to you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, just one. Thanks for putting this together. Um, you mentioned that the district's going after a grant from Pitt County. And if we don't get that, their contribution would drop to fifty thousand? In the uh page eight. And my question is not, it was just, when would we know?
I don't, I I don't have that answer for you right now, but I can I can certainly get back to you.
No worries. Yeah. It's great. They're upping what they can do, but it looks like, it looks like it's contingent on some things.
Yes, yes. And I will, uh, I'll I'll be very upfront and honest with you. I am happy to have this uh program going. And so the financials, although are are a blessing for the town, for the community, for the police department. We we will do everything we can to keep this program going regardless of what the financials really are.
Any other questions? Anybody want to hear more about the program or how it works anywhere else?
Maybe maybe just a like a like a ten second, thirty second, like just description for if there's someone listening online who's may want to hear just like what the S R O officer does, just.
Yeah, so.
And to remind us.
I brought one of our in-house experts. Paul was uh intentionally chosen several years ago as our S R O. He excelled in that position. Uh, but that position is. A police officer that is a jack of all trades. They go, the S R Os are assigned to the schools. They work. They have an office in the school. They're available to staff, to parents, to students. And they work with kids uh on a number of issues. One, obviously, that is really big right now that benefits the police department is that they're looking to break down barriers. And to show uh young individuals, there's no need for them to fear officers, right? What that builds is that builds rapport, especially with the younger generation. And so uh what we have seen is that the school resource officer. Affects our vulnerable populations dramatically in a very positive way because these students, these children. Will see the S R O as someone that they can trust and confide in. And um, Sergeant Lozo and I were speaking earlier today. This is way more than ten seconds. I am terrible at this. Anyways, so so some of the most, some of the most horrific crimes that you can imagine, these these individuals are able to confide in the S R O. And seek assistance, whether it's through mental health, whether it's through um effective and and positive prosecution. Whether it's through uh financial constraints that the family may have, uh, food issues. Uh, the S R O is kind of this clearinghouse that directs youngsters. It directs staff. It directs the community. To the proper, to the proper resources in our community. Um, that's probably two to three minutes longer than what you wanted, but.
That's great. And I think it's important that we hear hear that and know what we're.
It's, I I I'm very proud of what this program has become and I'm very proud of the way that Sergeant Lozo has been intentional about how he did this this work. And uh the legacy that he leaves behind with uh Officer Arthur Fields.
And can you just remind us, is the S R O um travel between all the schools, including the two charter schools?
The S R O works with all six of our schools, so even the charter schools.
Yeah.
Uh, but predominantly needed in the high school, then the middle school. And is able to trickle down through there. If we could clone uh Paul and Arthur, I would do it in a heartbeat, especially if we didn't have to pay him.
We had unpaid.
They're busy. They're definitely busy.
Great. Thanks.
I'll move to approve the attached agreement between the Roaring Fork School District and the town of Carbondale for the S R O position with a change in the signature line from the town manager to the mayor pro town.
Second.
Motion by Jess and a second by Colin. Yes.
One extremely petty uh comment. I just noticed, I feel like this superintendent's signature is a just typed out. No script font. I don't know if it matters to have it actually signed or.
It, this was originally.
Placeholder.
DocuSign document that had been executed by the chief and the superintendent. I'm the one that. Pulled it off and put it on the agenda, so that is a legitimate DocuSign signature.
Okay, cool. It looks like a typeface to me. Whatever, that's sorry.
Any other clarifications?
I'm sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to your whole team. Thanks, you guys.
Hey, thanks for facilitating that. Uh, next item on the agenda is the eight 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 Main Street Lodging Concept Development Improvement Agreement. Approval. Jared.
Yeah, so um, I I I don't think you guys have had too much experience with this type of a project, but um. Essentially, what we have is um eight 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 Main Street. We receive a land use application that was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and ultimately approved. Um, it was a minor site plan, included a conditional use permit and alternative compliance request. Part of those improvements included public improvements within the public right of way, things like um fixing a sidewalk, uh utility improvements, utility hookups. Um landscaping, um some items like that. And um as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval. They require that those improvements be located within the public right of way. For the town to um kind of approve that and get security that we need, warranty periods. Um, things along those lines, we need to approve a development improvement agreement for that. And so what's before you guys tonight is kind of the nuts and bolts of. Um, the development improvement agreement that would authorize the the town to um allow the developer to move forward with those public improvements. Provide the security necessary, um, get the as-built. Get the as-built and other warranty items, um, we need. And so. You know, we're not really here to review the design that was approved, that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's really just those. Public improvements. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise have included a, uh, motion on the second page of the memo to approve the DIA.
Great. Thanks, Jared. Any questions for staff to clarify the process here?
Yeah. So Jared, uh, because it's minor site plan review. It never gets to us.
Correct.
Good. So any of the architecture, any of the design elements, just for the public to know.
Correct.
We don't see it. It just goes because it's minor.
It went direct, it went to staff and then ultimately the Planning and Zoning Commission who made the final determination on all of the architecture, the. Buildings.
But also it fits the UDC and the guidelines within the, the, uh. Downtown.
Plan. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So as part of their review, they did find that it met the comp plan. It met, um, the pertinent sections of the Unified Development Code and. Recommended approval of it or approved it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just had that. I think it's a great example of the process working where our role at this level is not to review and weigh in on every single project and, you know, what we think about it personally, which is totally unpredictable for a developer, but. Rather to set the stage and say, this is what we want. And if you meet this, you've got some predictability and some certainty that you'll be approved. And it kind of keeps us out of it. So I, it's, we don't see these very often that are kind of big new developments like this, but I think it's a great sign when we do that our code and our plans are, are working.
Is it commercial transitional, um? Is commercial only? It's not it. Is there, what's the, the likelihood of this being just converted into residential free market?
It could be residential. Um. Commercial transitional allows both types of development. So, um, you know, it's being purpose built as a commercial lodging concept. So. You know, I'm sure there's some potential building code hurdles that would have to occur and, and be addressed to convert that to a solely residential.
And at that moment, they would also probably have to comply with inclusionary.
Exactly.
Question. And, and I agree with what you just said about the codes working. That said. Was there anything in the conversation that it was like, we've had this before. It was like, oh, highlight. UDC says this. We're trying to do this. Or were there any issues like that? We've, we kind of have this long list of things we'd like to adjust in the UDC. Did this trigger anything in your mind?
You, you know, I, I wouldn't say. From, from the Planning and Zoning Commission's review that there was anything that really popped out as. A challenge other than kind of the UDC not really. Being abundantly clear on the type of lodging concept that's being proposed per our code. We had to call it a motel and it's. Not a motel. It's, it's a different concept. So that was. One thing that we noticed in, in the UDC, um, there were some design, um, considerations that we brought up at the Planning and Zoning Commission level and. And that group, um, discussed and addressed those design considerations. Related to materiality, how the development fits into the larger neighborhood, um, multiple buildings on a single lot, stuff like that. But. But nothing in the Planning and Zoning Commission review necessarily called out a. Oh, our, our code is, is failing to help us in this review.
But it might need some clarification on.
You know, if we start to see more of these and this isn't just a one-off concept, then I think we could look at that. Definition of lodging and see if there's some other category that may not require a conditional use permit. Um, as an example, but I don't think that was a. A, a hard process to include. Um, Bob could speak if he felt it was a. Hard process to include, but, um, it, it seemed to work effectively.
Appreciate that.
Great.
So to, to your point, I, I guess I have a slight, slightly different take on this particular project. And I think in general, I agree, I agree with you. We don't, we don't want to be sort of. Quarterbacking everything. In this, in this particular case, I think, um, I think we do, we, it did to me sort of reveal a bit of a loophole in our, in our code. Which is that, um, if, if we look at this project and I, I, I won't speak for others, but I, I'm very convinced that if you were to look at it on a. On a featureless plane, it'd be very clear what is a side of a building and what is a frontward facing part of the building. Um, if you were to look at this, this building and, and what we have in this case is a building that's on Main Street and yet not turned to it. Full disclosure, I like the architecture. A lot of people won't. I, I really like the architecture. I think I like the concept, although I do think we, as a new sort of. You building use, um, something that maybe we ought to discuss, just so we're aware if, if another one comes up. The whole idea of a, of a motel without, uh, staff on site sort of takes us a little bit more in an STR direction. And we can, we can have discussions about how that, how that feels. Um, but, but back to, to architecture, we have. Uh, a code that says buildings should address, um, the primary street, which we have clearly defined because through this parking, our parking concerns. Buildings should address the, the, the street, uh, the, the primary street. And then we go on and say in the UDC code, but if they don't. You can have a sidewalk that goes from the main street around to them. And I think, I think that, I think we ought to seriously consider a change to that code. The, that was, that was, uh, the, the orientation of the building was a concern mentioned by staff in their initial memo to PNZ. Um, and I think rightly so. Um, and then, but, but upon looking at it, to me it's very clear, um, that's our code, you know, no, no. You know, no, no, no harm to, to someone for looking at that and realizing what they were allowed to do. I think secondarily, I would just, just point. Make, make, make my state that I don't think it, it addresses this building, that facade addresses, uh, five, seven, four, one and two, unless otherwise provided. Building shall vary in size and shape with a development that has more than one building. I mean, if we look at those two buildings that are exact mirror images of each other. Um, no variation to Main Street. And again, that's the facade. That's the only, my only concern. We don't, we aren't prevent, creating a pedestrian friendly. Facade in line with our code. Um, and I think that, that, that is something that isn't, isn't being, um, isn't being addressed in this. I'll vote for the improvement agreement. No problem there. But I would like us to kind of maybe think about why Main Street might be more important than other streets in our town. Um, and in a case like this with a new, a, a new development, a rather large new development, a new concept, frankly, a new commercial concept. In an arena that, that we've talked about, about encouraging some more overnight visitors and STRs that, that it might be worth. Having that, having that discussion. And I, I wish we had had that opportunity here, or at least to have seen the, um. The renderings, uh, before, before this meeting. I mean, I, I saw that, I, I did not know about this building until I saw it at Cree Board and I didn't, that felt strange. Um, and we can, we can have this discussion later and, and. We, Jared and I have had, have had great discussions in the last day or two about some of this stuff. But definitely some concerns about sort of the sequencing of approvals and sign offs, because there are quite a few contingencies, um, in this. And I know Cree Board was, is eager to weigh in on the portions that are on public property. But that's, I just feel like that, that should be addressed. I like the architecture. I just don't like the orientation and think it's not, it's not where we ought to, ought to be in terms of facing Main Street.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on the?
No, I, I, I agree with some of Ross's comments there, but I, and on the whole, I'm, I'm excited to see, um, lodging happening and.
Agreed.
Hopefully it will help our downtown businesses.
Yep, I agree. Okay. If there's nothing else, there's a suggested motion.
Approve the eight 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 Main Street Development Improvements Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Jess, second by Erica. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jared. Thanks for bringing that to us. All right. Last item on the action agenda this evening is the Town Center Owners Association dissolution, which we've discussed once. We'll discuss it again and we might discuss it one more time. We'll find out.
I think this might be the last time. The, I'm not going to read the memo to you. You guys are all familiar with what we're trying to do over there. Um. The, the thing I would point out is there's a lot of legalese in that attachment. But essentially what we're trying to do is take what were considered master common elements in the. Original plat and the original. Kind of concept of that development and convert them into easements. That will benefit the same people that they were intended to benefit, but no longer require. An association to manage them. So, um. I know we have Evan and Lauren on here. If anybody wants to add anything else, but this is pretty. I, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Great. Lauren, you want to get us up to speed? Nice to see you.
Hi. Nice to see everybody. It's a little later here, but I'm still awake. So, um, these are the same dissolution docs that you saw in late July. With the exhibits that have been added to show, um, the different limited common elements. And how they become easements, particularly the promenade, which is a public access easement. We have been waiting for all of the members of the Town Center Association to agree on language for these documents. You know, the purpose for all of this is to dissolve the association while still protecting the access that the members already have, so that nobody's really losing anything. At the moment, we are under the understanding informally that all the members. Are in agreement with the language. We are just waiting for confirmation from the last attorney. That there's no, uh, that there's clarity between, uh, the attorney and the client. And, um, there are some things, they're not quite ready to be signed yet. They, uh, still need to be finalized to update. The dates and to make sure we have the right witnesses and double check them for, you know, any last minute typos or those kinds of things. In addition to that, there is an amended plat for the whole property that will be, that is being developed and is almost finished. That also has to have some of those things updated, common elements changed easements, et cetera. And, uh, we are. Literally like a foot from the finish line here. So after all this time. I want to say, say thanks to Evan Clark, um, from Holland and Hart for really all of his help and clarity with helping walk through these incredibly complex documents. And also I do want to say that. There have been a million conversations with all of the members of the. Old Town Center Association and, um, the conversations have been. Confusing but fruitful. And I think that, um, everybody's worked really hard to make this an overall benefit for, for all the parties. So. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Evan, um, but we are really close to being able to say. Here, let's put Jan, John Hancock's on this.
Yeah, I, I, actually Lauren, I think you covered the field quite nicely. And, uh, uh, so I don't think I really have anything to add. The idea is to free. The property originally was in connection with the art space, the potential art space development, free the property from the covenants. Uh, and, um. Establish these, uh, rights of way. There's both track A, the promenade, and there's the little five-foot easement that's over on the, uh, east side. Uh, that will become public access, uh, rights of way and solidify all the rights and go forward basis in these new documents. And we are right there. Again, uh, we're just waiting to hear back from the attorney. For the lot nineteen group and we know she's been in hearings and so it's, it's perfectly understandable that she was not available this week. But other than that, happy to field questions. But, uh, again, I think Lauren did a great job summarizing as usual.
Okay. Thanks, Lauren. Thanks, Evan. Um, any questions for any of our staff on this? Chris?
Uh, could you just educate me a little bit on like what re-recording? It seems like one of the sticking points is re-recording the parking. Something or other with lot nineteen.
Sure. I can address that. Uh, it, it's, it's actually something I don't. The, Mark and I talked about and then Lauren as well. We, we don't really think needs to be done, but the way, um, the. There's a, there's a parking easement that benefits lot nineteen, uh, that sits on lot seventeen that was reserved in a deed transferring that property. At least ten years ago.
No, December twenty twenty-one.
Okay. So this is not, not quite ten. I guess it's five-ish years ago. Uh, a while ago and by these standards anyway. And the, it was reserved in the deed and then transferred, uh, to the lot nineteen owners. And, uh. In that deed, it describes, it gives a physical or a legal description of that property, but it doesn't include. A map of it. And we all feel because the, again, the easement has reference to the deed and we all feel that that's perfectly adequate because it's, you know, it's the. Term legal description implies, we think that's a legally describes the property. Uh, however. As one of the sticking points with lot nineteen, uh, ownership and, and the attorney for the association. Uh, they wanted to take a braces and belts approach and go back and include the map, uh, on the original document. All of that is laid out in the plat. Um, and so we feel like it's perfectly adequately described and we feel like it was described in the original documents and there's really no need for all of that. On the other hand, there's really not much reason to fight about it. And honestly, uh, as my property law professor told me a couple of years ago when I was in law school. You can record your birthday cards if you want. There's not really anything stopping anyone from going down, recording anything unless it's, you know, facially false. Um, so if they want to do that, we decided not to waste the resources on trying to oppose it. Um, and, you know, in fact, it probably, you know, it probably is some benefit to as long as it's done properly. But we didn't want to take town, A, A, take the time and B, take town resources, uh, to get that done.
So they'll be covering the cost of that.
I suspect that they're probably not going to end up doing it at all. I think that the, there was probably an ask that they thought that we might do. But, uh, yes, would not be a cost to the town.
And it says that, that parking easement is, is everything off of that little. Segment behind it. It effectively is the entire length of that west side of that driveway.
No, it's four parking spaces worth.
Oh, four. Okay. So there is still, because that did seem like a major concern to me was how, where's the back of the building in lot seventeen for us? If there's no, there's no place to deliver anything or into this building.
Chris, that's one of the reasons why that there's, um, there are easements back and forth between the lot nineteen association and the town about. The maintenance of that property. Once we start to develop. When, when we put a shovel in the ground, um, then there's an agreement about who maintains what because. They have a parking easement and we have access rights across there. So, um, we wanted to make sure that there wasn't any confusion going forward.
All right. Yeah, I still think that's going to be a, that's maybe our most challenging plot to deal with in this whole thing as there doesn't seem to be any. Very much parking associated with it or anything. So.
It's not really a public hearing, Gary. Yeah, and we're, yeah, I think we're just going to stick to, stick to the process. Um, and so we're, this motion is an unusual one because it's not a final approval of anything, but it's, it can. Somebody, Lauren or even or Kevin, tell us exactly what we're approving if we vote to approve this.
Uh, I can take a stab at it and jump in.
Run with that, Kevin.
So basically what you're doing is making a motion to authorize these documents to be executed. Assuming that there's full agreement among the four owners. And allowing staff and. Our attorneys to make changes to them that we need to, that don't change the substance of the agreement. Before they get executed. Does that make sense?
So sort of authorizing staff to work out the final details and go ahead and dissolve this. And with the stipulation that all, that it's basically unanimous vote, um, that the other parties get on board. And if not, it could come back to us.
Right. But if, if everybody else gets on board and nobody proposes substantive changes. We would get the documents prepared and then the authorization tonight would be for. The mayor to execute those when. the mayor to execute those when they're in that final form.
Any other questions? It's been a long road to get here, but it's removing one of the obstacles to development on the parcel and hopefully just streamlining things in the future for everybody.
Yeah, I really hope not to see this again. I'll be frankly pissed, I think, if I have to see this again.
Okay. Well, there's a motion on page two of the packet, if anybody.
I would make a motion to approve the attached documents dissolving the Town Center Owners Association, releasing the related covenants and creating easements in the form attached here, too, and to further authorize the execution of the same, provided that one town staff and the town attorney may may make edits to the same that do not alter the fundamental substantive effect and to the other owners within the Town Centers Association, Owners Association, including the Lot nineteen Association, agree to and execute the documents.
Second.
This is a motion by Colin, second by Chris. Any questions before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to the end of our, yeah, thank you, Lauren, for all the work on that and even as well and and Mark and everybody else to the neighbors who've been involved in those discussions. Puts us on a good path.
Yeah, thanks so much, Gary.
Yeah, thank you. There's some meeting minutes from some boards and commissions in there that I encourage everybody to take a look at to keep up with what's going on. We have the next two Tuesdays of the month off. It's the one of those fifth Tuesdays and then the first Tuesday. So our next meeting is on August twelfth. Our new town manager, Ryan Highland, will be sitting there at that point, which will be great. And thank you, Kevin, for the
Yeah.
the the service as our interim one more time. Hopefully not again in your tenure here. And I'd say the agendas for the next month are are still being developed, but so far we're kind of sticking with our plan of keep things moving forward, but don't put any big new projects on the horizon as we await Ryan's arrival and start date. So we'll have a pool update on August twelfth. We'll have some liquor licenses, some contractual stuff. On the nineteenth at our work session, we'll get an update from the Public Arts Commission and from Clear on their path to net zero. And then at the end of the month, on the twenty sixth, we'll be start to look at our revenue and expenditures sort of pre-budget, start to think about where we are. And, you know, we also lack a finance director, so we'll see what budget season looks like, but it may be sort of a carry-it-forward budget year rather than major changes.
And the E-boards on the nineteenth, right, with Clear?
They may be. I'm not sure. It doesn't say it in our little draft.
We we can arrange that. We we moved it, I think, at the last staff meeting because we didn't know what was going to happen last night with the thing at the Third Street Center and whether they were going to have a meeting. So we moved it preemptively in case they didn't have a meeting, so they had the August meeting to do it. But since they had their meeting last night, I think we can put that on for the nineteenth.
Yeah, well, I think they would like to have the eighteenth, the day before, is their normal meeting, so they would like to be able to have another meeting before they present to us, so. And that would be great with Clear. I think that just makes sense.
Okay.
Great.
That's it. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Enjoy Mountain Fair.